This is the January 8, 2018, meeting of the Arben Board of Selectmen. Happy New Year to all. First off, we have -- we ask the audience if anybody's recording this meeting. This meeting is being recorded. There being none, can we stand and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two of our members out tonight. Mr. Little Liberty is out of state and our chair is a little under the weather and hope to see her back and on the mend very, very soon. First, tonight, we have public comments and we'll ask Mr. Morrissey from 207 Leicester Street to come forward. You can go to the podium or come up here, whichever way you're comfortable with. Please introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about why you're here.
Joe Morrissey, 207 Leicester Street. I noticed some trash blowing into my yard from across the lake. Went over to Hardscrabble Road where Allied Waste, I guess, and Casella is over there. And now they got a mess, mess, mess over there with the wind and the storms they had last week. But there's plastic bags in the trees and trash all over the end of our Hardscrabble Road. Of course, some of it's getting through the woods and blowing across the lake and then ended up over on Leicester Street. But I just thought you guys should know about it. I know that they're doing the best they can over there with the weather we've had, but it's if you -- I almost wish I took a photo, but I did not. But it's a real mess over there and maybe you want to write them a letter and get back to them on that and go from there. That's my reason.
The weather has been brutal and that wind, I can see where coming across the lake, could create a problem. Can you?
Through the chair. We'll absolutely get in touch with the companies and bring it to their attention.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I know they've worked well with us in the past and I'm sure that they have a question asked and they'll take a look into that and see if we can't get it resolved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, I guess that's the only public comments we have for tonight. Would you please pass that to Ashem? Thank you. Okay, first, we have presentation in the public hearings, petition for National Grid for a pole and wire location on Leicester Street. It is 7:00 and we do not have a representative here that I can see. So can we -- I guess we'll go to -- can we move up? We'll bypass that for now and then see if we can come up a little bit later on in the meeting. So we'll go to four under communications. We have none. And under the Board of Selectmen, general items, we have several drain layers items tonight, looking for their permits. And through our policies, we do not have to have them here. So the first one we'll take in is drain layer license for Randy Construction Incorporated of Newmarket, New Hampshire. And in our packets, we should have the paperwork for the application and also a letter from Jeff Mitchell from the Sewer Department. And it appears that all the documents are in order and the recommendation is there by them. And they also have letter of reference from the town of Grafton and the town of Milbury and in the city of Worcester. So is there any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Berthew.
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second. Okay, the motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's a vote. Okay, and then we have a drain layer license for Longwood Development Corporation of Worcester. And again, we have the paperwork in front of us for the city of Worcester, the town of Milbury, town of Grafton, and the town of Oxford for references. And also appears the applications were been completed. And we have a notice from Mr. Mitchell of a reference recommending the -- so I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, a motion. I will make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town or any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion, comment? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next, we have a name change for owner of flammable storage permits. This name is changed from Allied Waste for the gas registrations at 1, 3, and 9 Hardscrabble Road. The new name should be Republic Services. Please, they asked us to vote the name from Allied Waste for the gas registration so they may issue a renewal registration form. Is there any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the name change of the owner.
Second. Okay, no questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, we have a request to change the name of owner on a flammable storage permit at 12 St. Mock Street. The new name will be Quality Beverage Unlimited Partnership. And they're asking us to vote the change of name for consolidated beverages for the gas registration so that they can issue a new registration renewal form. Is there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the name change of the owner. Second.
Okay, is there any further questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, we have gift acceptances under 5E. That's through Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. The first one is from Catherine Hanson. It's a 12-foot Christmas tree and the approximate value is $200. And it's to be set up in the selectance room at Christmas time for everyone to enjoy. And that's the tree at the rear of our room now, which is just great looking. And that season has now gone by and hopefully it won't come back too fast. But it's a beautiful tree and is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And then from Laurie J. Lancia, $150 for the cupola fund. And the cupola being the high school cupola presently at Memorial Field next to the new high school. Is there a motion?
I'll start with gratitude. Second.
Any discussion, comment? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Still have nobody from the grid here, so we will continue on with our meeting. The town manager items, we have a new citizens' leadership academy. Ms. Jacobson.
Oh, through the chair. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank the board for asking me to do this as one of my goals for the current contract here that expires at the end of January. And as a reminder, the goal was to establish a citizens' leadership academy to take place this coming 2018. We wanted to coordinate and make sure that it didn't run up against the citizens' fire academy or the police academy as well. So just trying to coordinate those dates. We found some dates that it does not conflict with that. And we have -- we looked at leadership academies and citizens' academies all through Massachusetts. There were several in Massachusetts. We also looked out of state to see if there were any ideas or different types of plans that we could follow and just see some of the ideas that are out there with some of the feedback from residents who've participated and try to get a handle on what people are looking to get out of these academies. So what you have before you is a 10-week class that would begin on Thursdays, starting on March 22. And the classes would run from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. And it would end on the 10th evening on May 24. Each class, it's outlined in your information here, each class would focus on a different aspect of town operations or administration. I had reached out to the school superintendent, who I'm very happy she is very excited to participate in this because we felt that it shouldn't just be municipal, it should also be school. We're all part of the same town family. So there is one night that will be dedicated to the schools as well. So the schedule that you have before you does go over each of the town, the basic town departments. And we've tried to add some interactive activities to hold people's interest. And I know you really need a magnifying glass to see this, as do I. I can't see it from here. But I would tell you that it is on our website and so it's easy to see. There are applications that are available online. So you can go right online. Our IT director set it up so that you can fill the application out and hit submit online. You can call our office and we'll get an application to you. The deadline for application is February 23. And again, we're going to have something unique and different each night. It will be a combination of educational materials, teaching, letting, almost in a class-like setting, interactive though, engaging the participants, explaining to them some of the most popular asked questions, trying to have answers for that, trying to also explain a little bit about each department and what the different functions are in that department. Where possible, we included tours of each of the town facilities. We do have a disclaimer on it that there are some parts of the tours that may not be handicapped accessible because they're not open to the public generally. So there's no requirement to have it as such. But if we let people know ahead of time, the majority of the properties are available to -- they're handicapped accessible for most of it. But there are certain areas, particularly at the fire department and the police department, that have stairways. So we are letting people know that they may not be able to get there. It doesn't affect the classroom, it's just one part of a tour you may not be able to see. We've also asked the school department and we're grateful that they've agreed to let us use their bus, their small passenger bus. So we have three evenings here where we're going to transport participants from one location to another because there's so many town departments, we couldn't get them all in in 10 nights. So as you can see from here, we have multiple departments on one night or multiple divisions. So actually, the Department of Development Inspection Services, for instance, they have an entire night because it's planning, health, energy, code, buildings, animal control. There's a lot of pieces in that one. And then a part of a second night where we're going to start it at the DPW garage where the animal shelter is and continue it and have a tour of the animal shelter. And so people can see how those operations work. And then at the same time, once that tour is done, go in and have a tour of the DPW facility. All the things that take place there, the facility maintenance, fleet repair, just the equipment. We have another evening where we're going to start at the library and then bring the participants over to the high school and to the cable television studio and do a mock taping of a show. So they'll get to participate and actually they'll get to see the studio, participate, and hopefully we'll be able to use that mock taping as a promotion for the citizens' academy in the future. And so we'll have a bus for that. And then lastly, we have one other night where we're going to provide transportation. Again, we're going to start probably at DPW. We want to bring the participants to the Pappas Recreation Complex. We also want to bring them up to the golf course and show them the operations at the golf course and conduct the presentations at those facilities. So we're trying to keep it interesting and exciting. It's hard because we have to compete with the police and fire academies, which are very interesting and exciting, but we feel that there is enough material here certainly to engage the participants. And again, the whole intent of this, as you know, you set this goal, was to try to encourage residents to participate, give them information about local government and town government, get them excited and enthusiastic about what it's all about and what it's like, and try to develop some leaders for the future, whether they're board and commission members or, you know, potentially employees, just to get them engaged in town government and give them enough information that they feel that they understand what they're getting into. The very last night would be May 24 and that would be up at the senior center. So we're going to get everybody to every facility in town. But at the senior center, we would have our veterans agent, Larry Corbin, give a little presentation on what services we provide to veterans, then have the senior center director present on the programs that are at the senior center, and then combine it and have the graduation ceremony up there as well. So the other part of your packages, we've developed a flyer that we've posted in several places throughout the town electronically. We'll continue to do that over the next month. The hard copy of the application is in your packet as well as the schedule. We also have developed in the back, as you can see, a course evaluation because we want to get feedback from the participants and make any tweaks or adjustments for future years that may make it more interesting or enjoyable for those participants. So I want to thank all the department heads because this has been an effort that involved everybody. As you can see, every department and division is engaged in this process and will be. And they'll all be responsible for their presentations, their interactive sessions. Just a couple of other interesting things we might do is show them the green vehicles that we have as part of our green energy. Show them the emergency operations center trailer that we have. Show them some of the equipment that we received grant funds for and understanding the importance of the grant funds and what we actually get for that and how some of these things are funded in town. And then again, a tour of every facility, every municipal facility. At the schools, I believe we're going to, that's another night we're going to have a bus. We're going to start them at the middle school and have a presentation at the middle school, a tour of the middle school, take them to the high school, and do the same thing at the high school. And again, that's the school superintendent will be handling that. So we're really excited. I just really want to thank the board for giving me this goal because I think it's really beneficial to the residents to have a program like this.
I think it's come a long way and I think to put a program together like this, I think is definitely going to be outstanding. And I can't imagine it would be very much critical as far as the evaluation process. I think it'd be a great thing for people to just open their eyes and see exactly what we do. Is there any other comments?
And we encourage selectmen to participate as well. I know one of the selectmen already asked of selectmen, absolutely, all board and commission members. You know, obviously, you all know 90% of what goes on, but hopefully there's a little something for everybody to pick up on that they might not be aware of that might make your jobs easier too. So we encourage you all to participate.
Thank you. So it's 10 weeks on Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., starting March 22 and ending May 24. And for the first program through the application here, it says for the spring 2018 session, the information, the application is requested to be returned by 12 noon on Friday, February 23, 2018. And any questions, you can contact the town manager's office at 508-832-7720. Julie, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next, under town manager items, it would be 6B is potential vote to adopt proposed Chapter 61, 61A, and 61B process and policy. And the potential vote, I don't think will probably happen tonight because we will be seeing it tonight. Some information, have us a chance to take a look at it and bring it back. But we put it on there just in case anybody had any interest in it. But I'll turn that over to Ms. Jacobson.
Yeah, we put it on there just in case the board had wanted to take position. Our recommendation would be to just take a look at the information and come back in a couple of weeks. There's certainly no hurry. We haven't had a policy so far. So just by way of background for the public to know, the Board of Selectmen also gave me a goal of developing a Chapter 61 procedure and policy for the town to follow when we get notified of either an intent to sell or an intent to convert 61 land, which could be 61A or 61B, which is either forestry or recreation land. And we do have a process that we have to follow under Mass General Law, Chapter 61. But we wanted to add in some unique processes to the town of Arben that we felt would help the process, not required by law, but certainly would help engage the public and provide more outreach than the law requires us to provide. So what you have in front of you is not a verbatim reiteration of the law. In certain places, we did put it in there. The law is the law. It's multiple, multiple pages and sections. But what this really is, is a guideline for the board because at the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen is the one that takes the vote. Town meeting takes a vote on the appropriation for any purchase, but it is the board's decision as to whether to purchase or exercise your option to purchase such land or to assign that option to a qualified not-for-profit or to waive that option. So to help the board and to help all the town departments, we've put together a process that we believe it does add a few steps that over and above what the Mass General Law does internally and administratively. But we feel it will help engage the, not just the public and the residents, but also some additional boards and committees that may want to be engaged in it. Now, under the law, a landowner needs to notify certain regulatory boards. We've added in the option of, we believe we should notify boards beyond that. They might not be the regulatory board, but they certainly may have an interest in it. We also are recommending notification to abutters, which is currently, it's only required when you have a public hearing, which is required. But we're suggesting notification to abutters beyond your typical public hearing requirements to go up to the 500 feet. To help, because this is an overwhelming process, it's really two different, there's several different levels, but there's basically two different issues that we have to deal with. One is a notification to the town if a landowner who's currently classified as a 61A or B wants to convert it to a residential, commercial, or industrial use. So there's a whole process that you have to follow. Almost identical is the process that you follow if they notify you that they were intending to sell. The big difference is with an intent to sell, they have to provide the town with a bona fide purchase and sales agreement that's already been agreed upon. So there's no negotiation for the town, as we have at South Hold Road, for the purchase price. The town is required to purchase it for the price that's been negotiated between the landowner and the potential buyer. Under a notice to convert, there is no purchase and sales agreement. The owner is notifying the town that maybe they'd like to eliminate the exempt status under the 61 and convert it to residential, commercial, or industrial use. The town has the first option of refusal to waive, exercise, or assign that right. And in that case, you would need to get an appraiser. So there's a whole process under the law by which you get that appraisal. And that appraisal determines the value that the town would then have to pay. So that's really the main difference between the two. And then the last piece of this is that we thought it would be helpful to develop a checklist. We had developed one when it happened to us back in '14, just internally that we were using, but we thought it would be helpful to have a full checklist. So on the first page is a checklist for an intent to sell. And again, that involves a purchase and sale. And the second one is the intent to convert, which involves the need for an appraisal. So regardless of who's here on the board or who's in town administration, moving forward, this checklist can easily be used by anybody to guide them through the process and to make sure that all the appropriate steps are followed. Again, this doesn't replace Mass General Law, it enhances what's at Mass General Law. And the caveat being, we have, and it is in the packet, we have asked Senator Moore and Representative Frost, and they've been great about this, to file legislation to amend some of the terms and conditions in Chapter 61 because it's very onerous to a municipality to meet these deadlines that are there. It's very, very difficult, especially a town with town, with a town meeting form of government because of all the notifications and postings and if you want to purchase, you need to have an appropriation to do so. So you need a town meeting vote. So we're continuing to work with both legislators to continue to try to change the legislation. Should that ever change and those deadlines and dates get changed, this policy would just need to be amended. So what's in there now is 120-day, would be amended to whatever that new date would be. So this is under current law. And if that law changes, we're happy to update it and provide you with a copy. So my recommendation would be to take a look at it. Let me know if you have any questions over the next couple of weeks. It would be nice if you wanted to vote on it in January. You certainly don't have to. But we thought, and then, you know, at the next meeting, if possible, then we'd have a full board certainly feel to ask questions publicly, ask them before then. But ultimately, I think it's important that the board voted because really this should be your policy. It's your decision on these properties and we want you to be comfortable with the policy.
Any questions, comments? I do have one, Julie. I know that the state legislature was approached about time period, about what it would take. It says it's 120 days here in this form, but wasn't there something that was supposed to extend that time?
That was the legislation I was just referring to, yes.
Okay, and has that been passed? Or is it still being discussed?
Still pending.
Okay.
The legislation has been refiled once, two or three times already. Honestly, there was opposition from the New England Farm Council. And we feel that we've addressed those concerns, the legislators feel that they've addressed those concerns. But their opposition to the extension of the timelines was that they don't want to see any negative impact on the farmers that may be trying to sell property. And our response is this isn't impacting the farmers because they'll already have a purchase and sale. They've already made that decision to sell. By the time they contact us, that decision's been made and they've negotiated a contract. We're just asking that municipalities across the Commonwealth get extra time to make a decision on whether to purchase because you most likely want to do a very brief environmental analysis, you may want to do an appraisal, you may want to do some deed research and make sure what you're getting is what's there. And you also might have to go to, most likely have to go to town meeting for an appropriation. That's really tough to get all that done within 120 days, considering the first 30 days, you're supposed to be reviewing the bona fide offer to see if it's even bona fide. So really, you've lost 30 days already. It gives you 90 days to do all of it. Very, very tough. So the farming community, I hope, will understand that this isn't meant to stop them from doing this. This just gives us, towns, a little bit more time to properly and fairly review these requests. We're talking about a lot of taxpayer dollars that are spent on some of these and to rush it through for some timelines that I believe are unrealistic isn't really fair. We do have the backing of the Mass Municipal Association on this. And again, State Representative Frost and Senator Mike Moore, both co-sponsoring this legislation. So we're going to try again and see if they will extend the timelines. The other piece that we proposed putting in that legislation was to put a timeline for the property owner, the landowner, to notify the town that they're going to accept the purchase and sale agreement. Right now, the town has deadlines that we have to do to accept it, sign it, and get it to the, and put it in the registry of dates, 120 days. The landowner has no timeframe for which they respond and say, yes, we're willing to do this. So the town could get an appropriation, borrow the money, and then still be waiting for the landowner to notify them if they want to proceed or not. So it can cause some arbitrage issues as well if you were to borrow the money ahead of time. So we're suggesting that the landowner be given a certain deadline to get back to the town.
Okay.
So that's basically, there are four timelines we're looking to extend or clarify. And everything else is the same.
Well, I guess, another question I have with this, and that 2014, 61A kind of gave me a problem. We won't go back to that, but you have the, within 120-day period, that's the law as it is now.
Yes.
Can we, developing a policy, can we develop that so that we can make it, say, 180 days?
No.
No, it has to go by the state law.
It has to go by the state.
So state law supersedes whatever the town would?
Yes.
Okay.
The town has to follow the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 60. And that's why we have to go through the legislature to amend the chapter in order to extend any timelines. The town, as we did here, can develop a policy and expand upon the law. We can say that we want to hold additional public hearings, we want to notify abutters, we want to notify additional boards and committees. But really, the additional things that we can do are very limited. You've got to stick with the law.
Is there anything we could do as a board or as a town just to notify them, the legislature, that, you know what, this is important to us and that we would like to see it moved on?
When it is refiled, the board could take a vote to send a letter to testify on behalf of it. I do send one every year myself to testify. I've actually gone to Boston and testified. I believe you may have, or I say you, but the Selectmen's Association may have submitted a letter in support of this as well. Last year, I think they did. So certainly, the board could take a vote to support the legislation. Again, it's not, there is not a negative impact to the landowner. The landowner can ultimately sell the land. This isn't stopping it.
I think it's protection for the town.
It's just giving us a little more time.
Absolutely.
And you know, the other piece is if we want to get a grant, if any town wants to seek grant funding, there's not enough time to apply for a grant or even to go to a private foundation to get funding to help with this. And it's very difficult when you're looking to assign this to a qualified not-for-profit like the Greater Western Land Trust or the state. They need time to review it too. So it's not just our process, it's the process of the other organizations that may want to have this assigned to them. So I think it just all around provides everybody with a realistic timeframe that's not unreasonable.
I think like anything else, that when you want to sell something, you want to sell it quick. You want to just move along. But when it comes down to dealing with the town or any municipality, it's better off to take that extra time to take a good look at it and be sure we're protected and we don't run into expenditure that we weren't anticipating. So I think that if we can get that passed along and moved along, I think that will help us along. But thank you very much.
You're welcome. And if there's anything that the board sees in this that's either missing or you want tweaked, please let me know. We can certainly take a look at it. Some of it's in there because it has to mirror Mass General Law and others are just what Some of it's in there because it has to mirror Mass. General Law, and others are just what we're recommending we add in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, we will approach this possibly at our next meeting. It doesn't mean that we have to have a vote on it, but we can approach it at our next meeting and discuss it further. And if you have any questions, you know, we can approach the town manager at any point. And we can also ask questions at our next meeting, whatever comes, whatever the board wishes to do. Again, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay. We still have no representative from the national grid here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, may I add something? It's not on the agenda, but it wasn't, it wasn't an issue until pretty much Friday and over the weekend, so it couldn't get on the agenda. I just want to add one thing on here. We did just tonight send out a code red call. We posted it on Auburn Cable TV, our website, our social media. There'll be electronic message boards. So, I just want to follow up on some of the inquiries and calls and concerns that we've received from residents.
Would you please?
Regarding the trash drop-off.
Thank you.
So, the general gist of this is that last week, the Republic Services was already on a holiday schedule. Monday was New Year's, which meant that everything got bumped up by one day, pushed off by one day. So, Monday, that was New Year's, got moved to Tuesday, Tuesday to Wednesday, Wednesday to Thursday. Thursday would have been to Friday. Friday would have been to Saturday. The blizzard came on Thursday, and trash had to be canceled. The trucks just can't get through. First of all, it's dangerous, and second, they have a lot of trouble despite their weight, almost because of their weight, they sink into the ice and the snow, and it becomes even harder for them to move. So, it's very difficult and a blizzard for them to be out there. So, Thursday got canceled. Thursday got canceled, which was the carryover from Wednesday because of the holidays. So, the Wednesday pickup had been scheduled for Thursday. So, when Thursday got canceled, the Thursday pickups got scheduled to Friday. The Friday, excuse me, the Wednesday, I apologize, the Wednesday that was supposed to be Thursday got moved to Friday. The Thursday that was supposed to be Friday then had to get moved to Saturday. That left Friday customers without a pickup that week. Under federal Department of Transportation regulations, and I'm looking at Darlene, so please correct me if, maybe, come on up, Darlene. We've had several conference calls and conversations with Republic Services over this, trying to see what we could do to help the residents, but some of it, our hands are tied. We don't really have a lot of options for how this works, but the bottom line is Republic Services is not allowed to exceed 60 hours per week, per driver, for working. So, because they then had to work Tuesday through Saturday, they were not allowed under federal guidelines to work on Sunday. It wasn't that it was Sunday, it's that they already had their 60 hours, their 12, their five 12-hour days. There are severe penalties if they exceed that 60 hours, so they have tight schedules. So, that Friday schedule got canceled, and Friday customers would be picked up this Friday. So, in other words, they didn't get pushed off. So, they're losing that whole, not just one week, but technically two weeks because they hadn't been picked up since the prior Friday. So, they're getting put off by one week to this Friday. And we understand that that's a concern for some residents, especially this time of year with the holidays and all the wrapping and the boxes, and there's just more trash this year. So, a couple of things that Republic was willing to do, and we certainly were also as a town. We said that we would not require the overflow blue bags that normally would be required to double up the trash this Friday. So, we're not gonna have to do that. And then, we talked with Republic this afternoon and asked if they'd be willing to put a dumpster at DPW to service not just those customers on Friday who maybe won't be here this Friday and couldn't put it out or don't want to wait until Friday. It will give them the opportunity to put their trash at DPW. Republic will then pick it up at that point. If they choose to just wait until Friday, they'll still get picked up on Friday. This is a recycling week, so they would be putting their recycling out anyway. We're asking that at this dumpster, it be for household trash only, no other bulk waste.
Right. So, the dumpster that will be there is in an effort to help with the inconvenience of what the storm caused. So, the municipal Friday customers are allowed to bring down their trash and get rid of it at DPW. And anybody that may have been inconvenienced by the storm, if by chance Republic did miss them as through the course of, it's a confusing week anyways just because it's delayed by a day. So, sometimes people aren't thinking that, so they just forget to put out their toter. So, we want to give people the option of not waiting until next week, of bringing their trash down, trash only. So, bagged trash, they don't have to have it in the blue overflow bags. It can be in a regular trash bag. They can bring it down. We're asking that people not bring recycling. So, recycling is going to be picked up curbside as this is a recycling week. So, only municipal trash for the customers on the municipal program. So, we have been fielding calls in inspectional services, and I know the assessor's office. So, you know, people are calling, and for the majority of the people, they understand, you know, just kind of the set of events that have caused the snow to kind of tumble through. So, we want to try to alleviate that problem for people of having to have to hold on to trash. We don't want to cause any more problems than what the snow has already caused. So, we appreciate everybody's, you know, flexibility, and people calling, calling our office have been very gracious. So, we want to give them an outlet to be able to get rid of the trash this week.
Great.
And then, just to add a couple of things to it, just to put it all in context, in the last 30 years, this has had, they've had two cancellations in a week, which is what happened last week, one being the holiday, one being the snow. It's happened six times in 30 years. So, it is an anomaly. It doesn't normally happen. The last time it happened here in Auburn, our understanding was it was March of 2010. Republic Services, 14 municipal contracts in this region, and 13 of the 14 had the same issue with the Friday. The ones that didn't were because they're not on an everyday pickup. They were on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday pickup, which really threw them off because they wouldn't, they weren't even on a five-day. So, we have been asked questions about why couldn't Republic just put extra drivers on and have those drivers come and work at night and try to get the pickup done at night? So, there's a couple of things. Every driver they have available to them has been on the road. They do not allow vacations for two weeks during the holiday period because of the potential for snow and the excess trash that's generated. So, it's all hands on deck. They're already there. Federal law, DOT law, requires that they have 10 hours off between their shifts, and at the end of the 60 hours that they've put in, they have to have a 34 or a 36-hour break. So, they can't, at the end of 60, they can't give them 10 hours, they have to give them 34, which gives them a day and a half. So, if they get done at a certain time on Saturday, they can be back on the road Monday. But if that time on Saturday exceeds that, they can't even be there early Monday morning. So, it's not as easy as just saying, let's bump everybody one day, because to bump everybody one day, including the Friday, and do Friday and a Monday, Monday and a Tuesday at the end of that week, those Friday customers still wouldn't have been picked up.
Right.
Because by the time they hit Saturday, they would have already seen their 60 hours. So, it's a very complicated, the final issue that I want to just bring to the board's attention is with the contract, as with any vendor contract, there's a force majeure clause, which says that events that are beyond the control of the vendor supersede all the other terms. And in other words, weather, and weather conditions are absolutely one of them. So, when there's a weather condition, some customers had said, well, can we be refunded because we pay for a year's worth, which is 52 weeks? We're only getting 51 weeks because the Friday customers were missed. It doesn't apply because the force majeure clause supersedes everything else. So, that does protect any vendor in a case of a severe weather situation. So, the town has no legal recourse for getting back for those Friday customers, that one week that gets missed. There's no mechanism for doing that under the law. The last piece of it is, unfortunately, made it even more complicated because Friday was the holiday, because, excuse me, Monday was the holiday, Friday was the one that got bumped. Friday is their largest customer day. They actually do two routes on a Friday. So, versus 800 customers during the week, Fridays, they have 1,600 customers. So, they couldn't have fit them in within that 60 hours, even if they had added a couple of extra hours, they couldn't do it. They already hit their max. And again, to push everybody off and start all over again this week and to carry that out so Friday customers weren't somehow punished per se, Friday customers would have, again, been hit by it unless the entire schedule got, was rescheduled, and that wouldn't work with the number of hours. So, it's a complicated issue. We recognize it. We understand. We're sorry that it did cause an inconvenience. And again, it's a rare situation. We hope it doesn't happen again on a holiday week, and it's tough when there's a storm. It just makes it very challenging, but for safety purposes for everybody, we do suggest that you don't put your toters out until that morning if there is a storm. It's a good reminder because you don't want to get them out in the way of the plows. We want DPW to be able to have clear access to keep the streets clean. And in this terrible wind we heard tonight about it, the toters are blowing. It's very, very challenging.
And as inconvenient as it is, they are willing to put a dumpster at the DPW on Milbury Street to.
The dumpster will be there tomorrow morning at 7:00.
A lot of people to bring there.
And it will be there until Friday afternoon at 3:00. If people want to bring their trash, again, it's not just those Friday customers, but a couple of people might have missed it. It's cold. They might not have got out in time.
Right.
They might have had trouble getting outside. So, we want it to be available to anybody who's on the Auburn municipal system, and that's the key here. It's not for private, privately contracted services. It's for those who are on the municipal trash pickup program. And they will pick it up Friday. If people choose not to drop it at DPW, their trash will be picked up Friday. And everybody else is back on schedule for this week.
That's correct. So, just, they will provide the service, it's just delayed a week. So, that, this coming Friday, if people aren't able to get to DPW, just leave your, leave your toter, your full toter, and your overflow trash, they're gonna pick up all of the trash. And since, obviously, it's a recycling week, we want to make sure people are reminded to put out their recycling as well.
And again, no blue bags will be required for those Friday customers. There was an issue last week, whether it was weather-related, where some of the vendors in town, local providers in town ran out of the blue bags. They probably weren't getting deliveries because of the storm, whatever that reason. People weren't able to buy the blue bags. So, we don't want to cause a problem. It's not their fault if they couldn't buy them. Republic recognizes it. We recognize it. So, just use your regular trash bags.
Okay. Thank you.
And any questions, direct to the Board of Health, Town Manager's Office, we're doing our best to field all the information. We're gonna try to get some type of a Q&amp;A up online to kind of summarize everything we told you tonight. It's difficult to put it in writing. It's easier to explain it verbally, but if there's something there that we can help people with, we're certainly able to do that.
Great. Thank you both very much.
No, thanks for taking the time. And again, we, it didn't come to light in time to get this on the agenda on Thursday afternoon because of the snowstorm.
Okay. Any comments?
I just want to make a comment based on storms. This is the time of year that we need to make sure that we have the fire hydrants cleared.
Thank you, Larry.
You know, it's very important that, you know, you take the extra 10 minutes and clear that fire hydrant if it's near your property because, number one, if it's not, it takes that much more time for the fire department to find the hydrant, and then it takes that extra time for them to dig it out. So, just a reminder that this is the time of year to keep those as clear as possible.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. I keep looking to see if we have a representative from national grid. We do not tonight. We have no tabled items, no Board of Selectmen member items. And is there any public comment? Being none, we have minutes from December 11th of '17, and I know that there were some concerns, some questions of why these weren't up to date, but it looks like we're pretty much up to date with these. And Sharon, we thank you very much for your due diligence in moving this along. I know this is a lot of extra work, but this is, we're up to date now. And is there any questions, comments, concerns, errors, omissions? If not, I'll accept them as presented. Is there anything else come before us tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you and good night.